The February eighth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First, I'll read the remote planning statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Now, first do a member attendance roll call. My name is Richard Escolas, member Jeff.
Jeff Stafford, member.
Norman.
Norman the blank, member.
Roger.
Patrick McCarthy, member.
Okay, we have four members. We have a forum for tonight's meeting. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval. We have none. Under action items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
I'll make that a motion.
One second.
Seconded by Roger for the discussion. There being none, I'll call for a roll vote. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
And Roger?
Vote yes.
Okay, carried unanimously. Okay, anyone have any old business? No? Okay, new business? No? Okay, submissions? There are no submissions? Okay, next is the Planning Director Report. I'll turn that over to Tony Souza.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hello, everyone. Thank you for for being here tonight. I was gonna say, if there was nothing else, it sounds like we would have broken the record. It's one of the shortest meetings, but I
We've been there before.
But but I I thank you for this opportunity. Under updates, I'd like to provide some some information with respect to some potential zoning amendments. This board may wish to to consider in preparation, as we we know, town meeting scheduled for May fifth and working our way towards there. I'd like to share with you all some potential amendments for consideration, just the general sort of topic, and also talk about twenty twenty one planning projects as well that we at staff level have in the queue for this year also. So I'm going to try now just to switch my screen over. I prepared a PowerPoint. And let's see if, let me know how this goes. Can everyone see this? This screen, the PowerPoint, potential zoning amendments and twenty twenty one planning projects?
Right.
Okay, great, great. We we tried during dress rehearsal. There were some logistics, but looked like we we worked this out pretty well, so. So seven different items would like to share with you all. And although not necessarily proposing seven items for potential amendments at this time, but these are items that some of them, this board may wish to 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 request to the board of selectmen to 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 advance for recommendation of this board and to bring forth to town meeting either this spring or this fall or at some other point in time. Again, not all seven are are ready, if you will, but these have come up come up through through practice since I've been here November, started in November. Folks have brought up various thoughts, recommendations, as it's come out through through this process as well. So I'd like to to hit on these seven tonight and see if there are any others as we move forward. Any thoughts, suggestions, some of the things we may want to? We may want to amend in the zoning ordinance. We certainly would welcome the opportunity to to work with you on. First one is Village Business District. So under the Village Business District, to consider parking recommendation that adjacent marked on-street parking spaces shall count toward off-street parking requirements and that all accessible parking spaces must be provided on the same lot of the use to be served. So in essence, looking at frontage along the properties and perhaps it's a corner lot as well, provide that the spaces are marked. And property owner could take advantage of those spaces to count towards whatever their requirements may be for either residential, retail, commercial, and so on. This that I'm showing you here is the conceptual layout prepared by T E C last year, and I believe the public presentation was perhaps even a year ago this month or sometime around this this timeframe. If not a little bit longer, but to in this conversation, the Village Business District, the town is pursuing design of Main Street to narrow Main Street to provide for bicycle accommodations, repaving, bump outs, adding green space and streetscape improvements, sidewalk reconstruction, and so on. The marking of the spaces, while they do exist in certain segments of the Village Business District and Oxford Center, permanent marking of spaces throughout the corridor will exist under the new redesign. And so seeing this as an opportunity, as was brought up at one of the earlier meetings, maybe the first one, maybe even the second meeting I I attended here, participated in. There was this item that came up about considering the front spaces as a potential factor in calculating parking requirements. This is just another basic layout, again, showing a certain segments that would now, under this new design, which we're currently in the process of applying for a a tip to get on the get on the M P O, handle through the Regional Planning Authority to secure additional funds to to bring this to full design, construction, and part of the tip process, the Transportation Improvement Plan, is to to secure the necessary state federal dollars to get that, to get this project similar to Route twenty, right, together in queue over the next few years.
Tony, would these parking spaces be open to the public, no matter what businesses they were in front of?
Excellent question. Yes, they would be open to the public. Nothing would change other than the ability of the the establishment, the property owner, to use those spaces in their in their calculations for required parking. So with the ultimate goal, and this has been done in other communities too, with success, the ultimate goal is with the mindset of you're reducing the need of paving in the rare and the side lot and really taking advantage of those spaces to help incentivize redevelopment within the the center, in this case, from the Village Business District. And it's fitting that that the Village Business District fits right within Main Street, right? And again, with the caveat that, because I do think it's important, there are some handicap spaces, to my knowledge, along Main Street that those spaces do not be used in lieu of. So and what I mean by that is if you are required by code to have a handicap space on on your property, that you indeed have that space on the property and not just use what's what's out in Main Street for simple logistics for access and so on, thought that that would be prudent to 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 factor in. So that's that's the first one. And
Before we go on to the next one, can I add a comment or two?
Sure.
We've been involved with this, obviously, on the master plan, but we had talked about, and we've talked about this well over a year ago, about counting on-street parking towards a new, a potential user. There were a couple of things that came up. In general, we spoke about the fact that the particular business or resident needs to have enough parking to meet the qualifications for their tenants and the people that are going to work there. And that the on-street parking would count, but only towards customer use. That way, there, the people wouldn't be parking overnight. You wouldn't have tenants taking up parking spaces that, you know, that customers would want. And that's the way it was many, many years ago. I remember growing up in Oxford. We had a lot of dentist office and doctors and attorneys. And Main Street always had a bunch of cars on. So if you're writing that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if we can kind of limit it to customer parking, it would eliminate overnight parking. Usually, the businesses, you know, people might pack there for an hour or two and move on. So that was that was one of the suggestions that we had talked about. And the other thing, as far as reconstructing Main Street, we just have to be careful how we word this, because people are getting confused. They think the width of Main Street is the width of the pavement, which is not true. The width of Main Street is the parking lot, I mean, the parking, the sidewalk, that green strip between the street and the sidewalk, and in some cases, onto residence property. All we're looking to do is to narrow the pavement part of it. And there's a number of reasons for that. When before Sean left, there was a great deal of talk about one of the reasons that we have to do this is that Main Street is actually too wide. It's not pedestrian friendly. And we just had a tragedy down in South Oxford a couple of weeks ago, where another person got killed and hit and killed. I'm not saying that was the only reason. Lighting was an issue as well, but one issue is the width of Main Street. Now, how we go about solving that, I don't know, but that's one reason why we want to narrow the pavement. The other thing is, people think this is a four-lane highway. I don't know how many times I I walked down Main Street quite often, and you see people passing people, and they think they're on the, you know, they think it's a four-lane highway. And it's not. So by narrowing the the pavement part of it, it would reduce that, and it might slow people down a little bit. And the other thing I want people to understand is, there's more to this. One of the things we had talked about is the flow of traffic through Main Street going east to west from from Sutton Ave to Charlton Street. Part of this project, the intent is to put in a home and traffic signal with the current standards, which means we can control the you know, the rates of of the green light and red light. We can we can actually make it stay green longer during certain times of the day. So we're not just looking at one thing. It's a complete project. And the last thing I will say, because sometimes people do watch us. In order for us to get this grant, our money from the state and federal government, there are certain things that we have to include, but we don't get the money. I know one of the things was a was a bicycle path. Oh, what do we need a bicycle path for? Well, you want to get three or four million dollars from the federal government to fund this project, they require you to put a bicycle bicycle path there. So part of it's going to have to be educating the people and making sure they understand what we got. But I think this is terrific. I think you're you're hitting on the two things right off the bat with our downtown parking and this downtown reconstruction, and I'm all in favor of this, and I appreciate the effort you've put in us already. Thank you.
Tony, my only comment is I think something we can address right away is our our parking bylaw. Okay, to include, to include on-street parking. Now, I look at your conceptual ideas, your today, your present, you show, they show actually a couple of cars parked not in parking places, but in the breakdown lane. Okay, it's basically a breakdown lane.
Yeah.
So there are no on-street parking spots right now. Now, if we were to do that, if we were to put it into a zoning bylaw, is the D P W gonna mark out parking spaces in the breakdown lane? Right. Let's say we got to talk about present situation. I conceptual and tomorrow, you know, that's good down the road. Okay, I'm talking about something, some little bite we can take right now, which would be to update our parking bylaw to allow on-street parking. But the problem with that is you got to have on-street parking. You can't just say you can do that, but not have any parking shown on the road.
No, that's a very good point. My question under the current situation, as you can see on the picture on the left, are those spaces, do we know if those spaces are actually legal or are they illegal, given that they're parking?
They're illegal, because there are no, there is no packing, there are no packing lines like your tomorrow one show.
Right. In front of St. Rock's Church, there are some lines. I I know I know for a fact that there were some lines in front of the church. There's actually a handicap spot there too.
That's the problem. We don't, in some areas, because it's further south, we have some mark too. Some areas, the parking spots are marked, some aren't.
But I agree with Richard, probably illegally.
Why don't we just mark them? As I can tell you right now, growing up in town, that was all parking down in that area. But the picture to the left, there was a dentist office, a doctor's office, a couple of attorneys in the church. That was nine times out of ten, you go by there, particularly on a Friday afternoon, that place was full of parked cars. So I I it would probably be a good idea to mark the the parking spaces. So we know exactly how many parking spaces we have too.
Sure, sure. I I do know that one of the one of the things, one of the most interesting is when you do start to to mark the spaces, it it just, when things are more defined, it's it's simply easier to manage it. And so the this Wednesday, I do have standing a meeting with with Jared at D P W, and you know, we're we're working on updating subdivision rules and regs, and and I will certainly mention this to him as well. Absent of, absent of there being markings, as the way I I wrote it, absent of that, we could also, if we wanted to factor in just a standard measurement for each space, if need be. So so I just wanted to to offer that as well. Typically, they're eight, eight by nine by eighteen is a traditional parking space, right? You you would, you'd see a market basket and so on.
By what, eight feet wide? Is that what it is?
Nine, nine feet wide by eighteen in length.
Okay. I don't know if that, I don't know if that's the amount of space that's actually there. I don't know yeah, those solid lines, what they actually mean.
And and I don't know here, but but what I've also seen, and I don't want to say typically, but what I've what I've experienced in the past is on streets, you'd see them closer to eight, eight feet wide by by eighteen, sometimes seventeen or nineteen. So so we can, we can also come up with some approximate distances on a case-by-case basis, because the frontage will vary between the different establishments and so on. But all the points very well taken.
Well, I I think it's very simple to change our packing bylaw to to allow that in that district. But I think we also need commitments to you know, literally mark the spaces at some point. So why don't you touch base with the D P W? I mean, Tony, you have had a large list of things you were looking at, and quite frankly, we only have two meetings left to to discuss it, to develop a a warrant article and hand it off to the selectmen. I think that, I think it's the, is it the twenty-third of March, Mary? Is that when it closes? I I believe it's at the end of March anyway.
Mary, I have the thirtieth.
Well, the May meeting.
The thirtieth?
October, we got plenty of time.
The March thirtieth.
March thirtieth, okay. So so we got whatever that entails. And Tony, the the way this board tended to operate on changes on bylaw articles or creating a bylaw article, and that is you generate a draft and we get to look at it, and we we slice and dice it during our meeting. Okay, get back with it again, then you know, Mary did that a lot. That's the way we routinely try to address it. We try to review it in our packets and talk about it at our meetings. And like I said, I I I have no problem without the on-street parking, even with the pavement, the way it is, because it is plenty wide. Okay, but if you got, and you got to make sure there's no signs out there that says no parking. Okay?
Correct.
That type of thing. So someone's got to do the review with that, and the commitment from a D P W point of view is, once this passes, to go ahead and start marking these things out, because what do the, how are these businesses going to know how many spots they actually got in front of their property? You know?
Right, right.
Yeah, so so Tony, I I agree with, you know, pretty much everything that everybody said here, and at the risk of beating a dead horse, there's kind of three, you know, three schedules here, as far as I see it. You know, you have these conceptual ideas that are longer term. You know, short term would be addressing things in bylaws, but I think even a more immediate term thing, you know, especially if you're going to be meeting with Jared, I'd be kind of interested in having D P W come up with, you know, kind of an inventory of what we have on Main Street today. I I pretty much live on Main Street. I I run there constantly. I can tell you, I've had no more than, no, no less than four near misses recently in crosswalks. And when I go out, I'm lit up like a Christmas tree. So these are people that actually saw me and just don't care, you know. So so that's more of a, probably a police department issue to to handle things like that. But that said, the the parking spots and the fog line on Main Street are very indistinct. And there's, you know, if you go to the south side of Main Street, you have some spots that are actually marked as parking spots, but it's not clearly evident that there's a difference between parking spots and and the fog line. So I actually almost got hit head-on in front of the common one night last week because a woman decided that the, you know, the fog line was just a right-side passing line, passing lane on Main Street. So I I mean, it's a really, really a mess. So, you know, I'm I'm kind of kind of invested in this, because, like I say, I I live out there. And I'd like to continue to live out there. But yeah, there, I mean, it's just, it it's really kind of a mess today. And I know, you know, like these guys said, there's there's some parking spots in front of St. Rocks, but in front of the common, you know, that's actually marked with just a fog line, and I think there may be spots marked like in front of the bandstand. So it's it's really kind of a crapshoot out out there. So you really can't expect people to to know, you know, where they can and where they can't park. And back to, I think Norman mentioned, you know, if we're going to have, you know, allow the on-street parking to count towards, you know, businesses or residences or whatever, I I think we have to differentiate between business parking and residential parking, like you said. Years ago, I actually lived on Main Street in one of the apartments, and you know, it was it was kind of crappy when, you know, you didn't have, or you had, you had people going to businesses, but they were using residential parking behind the bit, behind the businesses in spots that were, you know, actually earmarked for residents. So, you know, I think we probably need to do a better job of defining a lot of that stuff too. Oh, and and sorry, my, one last thing is, when you do talk to Jared, I I know that, and this this comes by way of Facebook, so I don't know, but there were a couple of people, a couple of residents, actually, that wrote to our congressman, I guess. I don't know, one of one of her legislators, and actually made them aware of some of the problems with side crosswalk safety in town here. And I guess they did some sort of survey, and the town is actually looking at, you know, doing something about the the crosswalks here in town. So I don't, I don't know if there's anybody in town that's actually coordinating that, but you know, it'd be probably good to get on the same page with that. You know, I know we started putting some, you know, the the lights at some of the crosswalks, which already, one of them, the light doesn't work, because I I know, because I cross at it all the time, the one down by Rox's, and I need to drop a note to Jared to let him know about that, but you know, it it would definitely be good to, you know, get these crosswalks in this century, because people are just way too distracted out there.
Sure, sure. I I'm reminded, we applied again for D P W applied again for additional funding for the improved signalization along Main Street of the crosswalks through a a special grant. There was a, I guess, a second round reopened, and it was a week or two ago, the the town reapplied. And so hopefully, we'll be successful on on that front in securing additional funds for the improvements on on Main Street.
Tony, the what Roger said, the two key issues. Why it wasn't safe was poor lighting and the width of the pavement, especially for us older people that try to cross Main Street. When you try to run across all that pavement, you know, I I one thing Sean was looking at is putting like an island just in where the crosswalks were. So if you could make it halfway, you know, it's, you could stop, let traffic go, and finish your walk. So those are the two issues.
Sure.
And the the width of the pavement on Main Street. The other, my quick question also is, are we looking at the town sewer, it would it would be a, and it may never happen, okay, because they talked about, I remember people talking about town sewage when I was in high school, which was over fifty years ago, but in the center of town, we still don't have it. And, you know, if we're going to go through all of this, I guess we should at least look at it rather than two years later.
Sure.
Out up to somewhere we can put the sewer piping in now or or whatever, just
Yeah.
Just to your own, your own point, because that's going to be one of the questions we're going to get to.
Oh, absolutely, to to get all the utilities in at this stage, prior to to doing all of the work. I'll, I will get an update on that as well. I I do recall this coming up, even during the summer, before I even came on board, I I remember this expansion of sewer coming up in conversation with the D P W director, so. Because it's 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 critical too for for redevelopment of of the center as well, for certain. So I I appreciate it, all the all the comments, and and I can certainly, for the next meeting on this and as as we move forward, I can definitely provide before the meeting a a quick draft of 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 proposed language. And and before the meeting, I will also, as I said this week, be following up with D P W two to to learn some more about the management of 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 this, the markings, what's needed for lighting improvements, sewer, and and so on.
Thank you.
I was, thank you. No, thank you. I was also going to, I I didn't delve too far into this, but if there is an appetite for, I'm happy to explore. In some instances, some places will also throw out there that sometimes based on square, it's based on square footage or number of units, that there also be an allowance for bicycle parking. And so there are some ratios, some standards to it. It doesn't dominate the the parking ratio, but it does acknowledge that there are other other users. And so happy to pursue this if if there's an appetite. I I did have sort of a a quick snapshot of what a few other communities were doing. But I I don't know what the what the appetite is. I think it fits well or could fit very well, given we are a complete streets community, right? Given the, as was mentioned earlier, one of the reasons that we're you know, getting state funds is because of the of the accommodations to 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 all users. So happy to pursue this if the board wishes to.
I think that goes in combination with your bike lanes, you know, your bike bicycle travel lanes. You know, I see that as something that, if you're seeking funding and everything else, that it started off as a as a master plan discussion, wasn't that right, Norman?
Yes, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's for getting funding for
I I don't think we have to go to town meeting with anything on this or that new concept. That that was something that you, first of all, you got to get the funding. Okay, and I would just make sure bicycle parking is part of that funding to put in bike paths, because it's just another form of transportation. Now, you got people using it while they're going to want to pack. They're going to want to place their bikes somewhere while they're in the center of town. So can they go along hand in hand with what you need?
Is not to have, not to go to town meeting. We would, you know, we're looking to get this thing funded, just like we did Charlton Street. But we don't have to go to town for for money. And it also, you know, people want their streets improved. There's a lot of, a lot of positive things about this, and there was a lot of There's a lot of, lot of positive things about this, and there was a lot of positive feedback on the master plan committee, and it was a lot of interest on that survey we sent out to the people in the community that responded. Main Street was important. They wanted to see improvements. They wanted to see it safer. And I wanted to see more small businesses. So again, by improving that, it all helps. The rezoning, better lighting, the complete streets program, these are all things that uh are gonna help. And there's a, there's a rating, they have a, it's called a walkability rating. I don't want to go into too much detail. But it goes from one to a hundred, and Oxford is fifty-nine. And uh so we got room for improvement, all right? And I don't want to mislead people. It doesn't have a real lot to do with the roads. It has a lot to do with type of amenities and services you can get in a in a walking distance. So we have, we have a ways to improve that. So, you know, I look at our downtown area as a blank slate. We've got something that most communities in the in the state or New England doesn't have, and I think we can actually make it better than what it is. So um, that's my two cents.
Thank you. If I may, the the second item um is relative to adult uses and under the, and I and I will share um an observation um that I came across a few weeks ago. So criteria for evaluation, board of selectmen shall not grant a special permit for adult uses if it is determined that. And there's two sections. There's five point one, and this section quotes as five point two. Five point one pertains to a certain statute of uh state law regarding, I I believe it's relative to to child welfare. Five point two um is pertaining to that adult uses cannot be within eight hundred feet of given um given uh uses and area. In our case, um, we say located, um, should say located not less than eight hundred feet from the boundary of any residential zoning district. Um property line of any parcel currently used for, and I'm adding residential dwelling, and I'll explain in the next slides. So cannot be within eight hundred feet of church, school, daycare, other adult uses, parks, playgrounds, recreational facilities, and so on. Here's, um, and that comes from uh page ninety-two in our zoning ordinance. Here's uh in the observation that I that I came across. So South Bridge Road. And you'll see here, this was from January first, twenty nineteen. All the way in the lower left, uh the parcel A was a a former ad adult use establishment there. Under the old, the zoning was changed, right? So under the old zoning, R four distance between that parcel, parcel A in the lower left-hand corner to the edge of the R four, give or take, let's say, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet or so. Those residential use uses within the R four would be protected under the current ordinance. I don't know if you just saw this, I just switched over to twenty twenty. So this was before, this is now. General Business has now gone into the R four. And under the current zoning ordinance, the residential properties that were once again going back in the R four are no longer fall under the um, the eight hundred feet buffer. So simply adding that not only residential zoning district, but also residential dwellings currently parcels currently used for residential dwellings within eight hundred feet. Then when I take this and apply this, there are other areas that if we were to do a radius of eight hundred feet, particularly down down in the industrial areas close to to Webster, um seemed as though it would conform some other areas in in town. But this was an observation that that I came across. And really was by by trial and error of looking at subtle changes in in the zoning. And then when I noticed, tried to apply this, I noticed that there was a change there.
So like putting that into, and that would protect the residential dwellings in that area by putting that that one?
In essence, yes. In essence, I would still, um, from my bubble, I would still have um, you know, legal review this as well, because the statue, the adult use statue that we have here, I believe was back in nineteen ninety-six or so. Um, so it may um be worthwhile, I I don't, it's been so many years, right? Maybe worthwhile to to have a quick review to make sure every, everything else is in good order. But um, but the most glaring issue to me was was this piece. So that's, that was the um, the second possible item for consideration.
I do believe that uh adult use was probably a pre pre-existing non-conforming to the, to that latest adult use bylaw. Okay? I don't know when that, when that actually became adult use, but I believe it was back in the seventies, eighties. Somewhere around there.
Okay.
It used to be, it used to be a, it used to be a restaurant. You know, and then all of a sudden it became uh, you know, adult use. So.
Yeah.
I don't know what it, what the bylaw even said back then, when that thing actually came came about. So now that it's been shut down, I don't know how many years have passed now. It's been a while now. I'd say a couple of years. Maybe they can't even go back and use it for that anymore.
Right, they the grandfather, well, the uh, it's been two years, it's been over two years. And um would require approval from from the board of selectmen.
Anyway, I just, I just raised that for for your concern was that thing, that thing there was pre-existing to that portion of our bylaws, so. I don't know what they had back then, but it was, would have been considered uh grandfathered in at that time.
Sure.
Because it's already there. But it's been inactive for such a while now, never has to be that again.
True.
I I guess, Tony, are there any other areas between besides that that moved to one area in the south south end of Oxford that would fall under the adult use that would could slip through the eight hundred feet or?
So looking over, and and this is generally speaking, so I I looked further up on South Bridge. South Bridge Road towards Auburn Line. Uh, there may have been a parcel or two, but but to keep in mind that wherever general business is residential um is directly abutting, um at least as I as I recall it in most parts throughout the town. There may be some opportunity in the industrial areas, um to the larger industrial areas where there is enough, um I think there's over a thousand feet or so from nearest residential dwelling. Does beg the question, though, where the adult use is still by a special permit of the board of selectmen. So so there is discretion um in permitting these. My my only reason to bring this up was and certainly not not being here at the time, I, what I saw here was just potential issue where it, when it was rezoned, for whatever reason it was, and and and
Was rezoned for business because uh all that property on that, on this this side of Texas Pond. They wanted to put in businesses along Route fifty-six there.
Okay, okay. Yes, yes. So so that was sort of my my thinking, though, to to acknowledge that there are um, you know, residential dwellings that that do exist in 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 GB as in this case. And there may be some others, too. Um, I I could comb through. But as far as where adult use may also be allowed um in conformance with the current, um, and even with the proposed, um, there's, there are still other areas in in town.
Tony, I got a question for you. Back then, when they did this bylaw, there was nothing about marijuana or all that stuff. Well, we have marijuana now as an adult use area. Could we make it one area, just that area up in North Oxford, that's the only place for adult use, which would be, you know, these type of establishments and the marijuana. So now we got one section of town that we only have to deal with, so you can't put it everywhere, anywhere that you want? Or does that make no sense?
I think we already did that. I think that's already
For the marijuana, we did, yeah, but not for
Not for
For adult uses.
So if we, marijuana is an adult use, well, this is an adult use, all right? And what do we make it? One area, just in that area, or is it worth having a discussion? That's what I'm saying. Now you don't have to worry about general business. You want to have this type of establishment? We've got a zone for it. It's in the area where you can you can go out, have your little show, and go get some marijuana and have a hell of a time. But I I think it would also make it easier for the police department, you know, to kind of monitor these these types of establishments. Let's face it, sometimes you get issues at these places. And uh having it in one concentrated area, again, just a suggestion, maybe it's not a good idea, maybe it is.
I don't know how it would affect if we doubled the distance instead of eight hundred feet, we made it sixteen hundred feet. I don't know if that would help or not help. You know, you know, obviously you don't want to eliminate everything, but if if sixteen hundred feet or two thousand feet would eliminate a lot more other areas of potential. You know, I don't think anyone wants a strip joint in front of their, in front of their house or eight hundred feet away from their house.
That's what I'm saying, Jeff. If we made this part of the adult entertainment area and the marijuana, all that goes away. That's the only place you can have it. Now you can put in our eight hundred feet from the school, a church, or resident, and we're covered. Because it's not a, I don't see a lot of these establishments opening up. I mean, a lot of them, so either
No, I I don't either.
No. So, yeah, it's a suggestion, Tony.
Sure. And and I'd be happy to to look into it more more closely. Um, and also
I think, I think since the board of selectmen, the grant of permit granting authority, you should should be it should come out of them what they want, they, well, what their feelings are, Tony. Willing to support whatever they want.
Sure. No, all all points well taken, and I'll be happy to to follow up. Just wanted to bring this to to everyone's attention that that this, that I came across this piece here.
You're doing good. You're bringing up conversations that we haven't had in years that we need to have.
Yeah.
I also enjoy these conversations. I I love no, no surprise, but zoning, zoning ordinances, it's it's what we do, right? So thank you. Uh, the third one here is, um, building commissioner and I, we 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 spoke about this Dover amendment, Dover amendment uses, and pardon me, I'm just gonna read read a little bit off of the screen. But um, MGL forty-eight, section three, there are uses that are exempt from certain zoning restrictions. Those types of uses, agricultural, religious, and educational uses. There's a lot of case law, this Dover amendment um comes from, um was born out of the the town of Dover way back when. And subsequent, there's been different variations of this, uh whether for religious use, educational use, have been pretty um, uh pretty hot topics um in this uh in this section three. So courts have ruled that specific exemptions from zoning are not absolute. Section three uses may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning bulk, height of structures, and determining yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. Under our current site plan review, and what we're seeing more and more in municipalities is having a a carve-out for the Dover uses. And in essence, saying that site plan review, when whenever applicable, we will be following what is allowed, um what is defined as reasonable regulations. So we're not necessarily looking at the architectural structure or some of the architectural um design of of these uses, but let's say we we would want to look at parking, thinking about childcare facility, a perhaps it's a charter school where the drop-off locations are and so on. Where it's absent um in site plan review, it it sometimes can present a challenge for municipalities. So having a carve-out makes it much more predictable, not only for the applicant, but also for for the board, um not only for now, but also for the future. There's no pending issues or anything of that nature, but we thought that this might be something that we'd want to get ahead of. So intent of the zoning changes to ensure that all such uses and facilities are reasonably regulated in regards to, and again, I just outlined what um what was what was detailed earlier. Building heights of the structures, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, and so on. We do not have limits on the application of zoning standards for section three uses. Under our site plan review, we would carve out those limits as what was defined. It would still be required by process to go through um technical reviews, still require a public hearing. Whatever process, the procedures we have outlined in site plan, if it's applicable, um if it meets the 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 requirements for site plan, would be the same. But the scope of review would be limited to to what we're allowed. That's that's all that I have for that piece, and I don't know if um if anyone has had any past experiences, if you feel strongly either way on this, if we've been able to manage. Not most communities, but many communities are are in the in the past ten, twenty years as this has evolved, have been adding these provisions. Have been provisions for limited site plan review or site plan review for Dover-related uses.
We we went through this with the halfway house at center of town, right next to the church, that the church sold the property to to them, and it was also right next to a daycare center also. And uh my record, record, since we just, we did stormwater management on the site, but we didn't have too much with the actual site plan or anything like that, parking.
But it was an existing structure and it, whatever. I I think this is, I think this would be a good thing to add because it's it's transparency to the 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 person that that wants to do the work to knows that as as a board, we're going to have our eye on those things that do pertain to the type of site plan review we want them to have, even though they have certain, you know, exemptions from the process. So I have no problem putting in wording in there to address this Dover amendment process, Tony. If you could, if you could create a uh, I call it a warrant article, basically, is how you want to, how you want to word it, how you want to give it to the uh board of selectmen. Can touch base with Mary, she's done a lot of them. They tend to want to list it on the warrant with everything that's what what is going to entail. Okay?
Yep.
So if you can get that to us for the next meeting, that'd be great. In our next package, so we can review it again at our next meeting. That's great.
Absolutely, absolutely. The the next one is regarding our cluster development bylaw. And I I certainly could use um some more guidance on this here, but let me kind of share where where I'm, how I'm approaching this. So by issuance of a special permit, the board may authorize an increase in building heights, stories, residential density, and or may authorize reduced parking setbacks, lock coverage, that include one or more public benefits. This is basically the intent of this is to grant the board some additional flexibility, authority. On a case-by-case basis, and depending on what the public benefits may be for for any given cluster development. Some communities will call this a type of a density bonus or some type of incentive incentive um zoning. Here, I I've defined the public benefits, and this is at the discretion of the board. This is, this would be a special permit. And again, on a case-by-case, the board would have the latitude, the applicant, the applicant would petition the board as part of their cluster development application to seek a special perhaps for increase in building height or let's say um reduction in parking. But then the board would look at and say, well, what public benefits are you providing beyond the 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 necessary requirements, right? So I outlined four here, but it could be one or two, it could be ten or twelve. Public benefits, provide a mix of housing types, so beyond single-family dwellings, perhaps duplexes, multifamily townhouses. Second, increase the amount of onsite open space for public access, and I should say, increase the amount of onsite open space beyond the the um minimum requirements. I put the notation of public access where if there is, let's say, twenty acres of trails and so on, that that benefit not solely be for those in the development, but that indeed you, I, the public may go there, may perhaps there be dedicated parking spaces and so on for for public use. Third, increase the number of affordable units. So under our cluster zoning, there is a section in there as a alternative to the comprehensive permit that the ZBA That the ZBA would do under forty B. A project, comprehensive project where they're proposing to build, let's say twenty-five percent of the units. As affordable by the state designation. Perhaps if someone is looking to increase the density of the development, that we require them. Um, that they build additional affordable units and later on, I'll, I'll talk about our housing production plan and. In our S H I and so on, but that's, that's another carve out, let's say I put in here. And then the other one is neighborhood improvements to public infrastructure. So perhaps it's a series of roadway improvements around the development parcel. Um, perhaps it's not only bringing sewer in for the development, but for the neighborhood. Um, could also be water, um, could be perhaps even structured parking. Um, that would thereby perhaps increase the amount of open space. So. What I was, um, sorry, I was just looking at the next slide, see if I had anything else. So what I was looking at here is basically, again, giving the board more, more flexibility, more, uh, latitude discretion. When it comes to developments that. Come under this cluster bylaw. And instead of them going to, let's perhaps get a variance or so on. Through the ZBA, they could certainly go through our process and, um, at board's discretion, board's authority. The board could grant them increases or reduction in requirements as the board sees fit. That's all that I had on this piece.
Have you reviewed our, uh, cluster? Development bylaw, Tony? Have you read it? Cause it's been through a couple of iterations since I've been on the board.
Okay.
And our iterations have tended to open them up a little bit rather than close them up. Uh, because of, uh, you know, upwind or whatever. Because of the fact we don't have sewage. Okay. Or water in a lot of places where some of these were going in. I know, uh, a former town manager, Joe's, uh, that, uh, town engineer, Joe Zaneski. Literally had to open it up because he felt there wasn't enough, uh, upwind to put a decent, uh, septic system in. And we updated the cluster development to, uh. Account for that. So whatever we do, I just, I just want to make sure that, uh, we got to look at the town in general. That doesn't have sewage and or water. And, and have a cluster development that, uh, satisfies everybody in town. I, I know Norman was at technical review in this, uh, developer at my end of town. Has different idea, but I don't know what that idea is, but we just want to make sure that we, uh. Have a cluster development bylaw that satisfies. All places within the town of Oxford.
Sure, sure. And, and Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, for my knowledge, for my benefit. Looking back, have there been any, any cluster developments, um, that we've approved in, in the past?
Yes.
This, okay.
Yes. One of them, the last one we had was off Prospect Street where they put in a multi.
Yep.
Multi-family along with residential houses.
Okay.
And that's the one where Joe found out they, they, they didn't, they weren't leaving enough up, the, the bylaw wasn't leaving enough upwind. Put in the, uh, septic system needed for that's, that, uh. You know, multi-family building. Okay, so I think he put like fifteen thousand square feet per unit. For, for a septic system and that's what.
Yes.
Last change, I believe, went into a cluster development. And the first cluster development I was involved back in the nineties. I forget what street that was off of. It was on the south end of town, crossed over three ninety-five. Someone was putting in a, uh, cluster development. That had a lot of land, but a lot of it was undevelopable anyway. And they would, they would. You know, trying to increase the amount of, uh, houses they could get on the, the property.
Was it Robinson's Pond one, was that cluster development also?
No. I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But anyway, it was, it, it was like a thirteen unit cluster development at that time. And that's when we massaged the cluster development bylaw. And that, that occurred back in the nineties. And, uh, the latest changes probably were in the two thousand something, maybe two thousand, uh, five, six, right?
Yes, it looks like two thousand five, originally nineteen ninety-four. Um, looks like when, when it was introduced and then revised in two thousand and five.
Yep. So we've had a, we've had some issues with it. So I know Norman brought this up because of some, you know, technical review meeting with the, with the developer, so. Just one of it. I don't want to. I guess my attitude is I don't want to change the cluster development bylaw to satisfy some notion they have.
Sure.
We, unless we feel it can affect the entire town.
Right, a, and, and no, and I, I appreciate the point. And, and hence why this, this thinking of giving the board more discretion when it comes to. These developments. Whether they're. Looking at. A lot sizes seeking reduction, well, if they wish to seek reduction, then it, what are the public benefits? And, and if the board would deem that there, there are none or they're insignificant or, or not substantial, certainly the board. Could, could reject the requests and so on.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way I look at it too. They come in here for, uh, uh, a development project. I mean, the board has a bunch of discretion, we've always had discretion. Uh, but, uh. I just want to, I just want to make sure anything we do with the cluster development bylaw would apply anywhere. Whether it be South Oxford, North Oxford. Out, the, the other one we had was in an hour, hour one district, they wanted a cluster development. Okay. I, because basically most of their land was undevelopable anyway. And they were trying to maximize their units, you follow what I'm saying?
Yes. Yes.
I gotta give my two cents here, I, I like the facts that we have more flexibility. Because we can negotiate with sometimes on some of these people. There are other benefits that we can get, if someone wants to get, ask to give them a little bit, they're going to give the town back something, whether it's more sidewalks. Or improving roads going up to that particular development, all kinds of things. Uh, it seems like lately the, uh, this type of development. Let's face it, we have the, uh, tech reviewers met with that developer that wants to do a forty B up. Uh, in North Oxford, uh, by the, uh. Plymouth Village there, that's forty units. But again, that's an area where we already have town sewer. Uh, the other one is, is the one that Rich referenced about the, um, Eastland Corp. Again, all town sewerage, no, no septic systems. So they have a, a capability of, of doing, uh, uh, you know, smaller units, smaller, uh, footprint. And it would be my expectation that because the project is going to cost them less money. We need to benefit, benefit that in other areas of the town. And this type of setup would give us some negotiating, uh. Leeway, there's also the other one about the Orchard Hill being changed and another project going up against, like up in North Oxford. Once again, where there is town water and sewer. No, twenty years ago. We really didn't get a lot of applications for this, but with the fact that the town sewer is up in that area. This is where it seems like most of this cluster development is, uh, is being, uh, looked at. And, uh, I'm, I'm all in favor of giving us whatever we can to negotiate. To get some benefits to the town, you know, usually projects like this, what, what do they affect financially? The schools and usually the DPW. Not that it does, it does affect everybody, but the biggest. Impact this has on the town monetarily are the schools, because it's the number of children. And the DPW, the cost of maintaining roads, while in the past, we put conditions in. Uh, we've had one developer come in and say, no, we're only going to do two bedroom units. So that tends to lessen the impact on our school system. Uh, a couple of them we've had where we'd say, all right. We're not going to maintain the roads, they're going to be maintained, they're going to private roads. You form a condo association, so it doesn't add, uh, to our, our infrastructure costs in that sense. Uh, where it does been, uh, an issue is the fire department, because they have to increase the amount of full-time fire people. They have to maybe get more equipment, especially if we increase the height size of, uh, of some of these buildings. So I think it's great that we got a little bit more flexibility and that we're, um. You know, we're looking on some of this because I, I, I think that's where the development is going to come. And that was again identified in the master plan, in fact, it was Roger that brought this up, remember distinctly about housing units. And we didn't have enough housing units for the, uh. Young professionals, okay? Double income, no kids. And, uh, Oxford didn't have a place for that. And we're hoping that this new project with Eastern Corp will, uh, supply some of that housing. So I would, uh, I would completely entirely support your, uh, efforts in redoing this and, uh. You know, give us a little bit more flexibility on some of these products to benefit, uh, the entire town. I'm all done.
So, so that's all that I had for cluster development, I, I'm, I'm happy to, um. Most of these I, I have a working draft, um, so I, I'm happy to, to share kind of what I have, um. Um, to you, Mr. Chairman, to the members, if, if you'd like to, to take a look at it. And if it's something that, you know, there's more here that we need to work on, of course. Um, if it's not ready for prime time, we can, we can work through it as well. Um, or perhaps that we, we may feel comfortable with the existing, um, ordinance itself, a bylaw. Um, and do some other minor tweaks if needed. But that's all that I had on this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I put this in here for a reason to get us through. The, the last three. Um, so, so some quick updates, um, updates and, and, and some of this, uh, may, some of this will be new, I guess. So, uh, stormwater bylaw, uh, met a few weeks ago, Mary, myself. Judy from the Conservation Commission in, in Jared. They, Concom, DPW are, are revising the stormwater bylaw. Um, some considerations revised to be less stringent for single family developments. Um, move certain detailed procedures out of the bylaw and, and adopting rules and regulations. And that the rules and regulations can be revised without need to, um, to, to tweak the bylaw every single time. And three, um, and I should say, working, uh, with them is tie and bond. Um, they are the consultant assisting with the MS four permit requirements. Um, and to ensure that the bylaw would be consistent with that, there was some discussion of whether this would be ready for spring or fall. Um, it's probably leaning more towards the fall, um, but we do have a follow-up meeting, um, later. Um, this month with respect to the stormwater bylaw, I just wanted to provide an update.
That's good, Tony, uh, I, 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 I say that'll probably be the fall too, yeah, I agree with that.
The, uh, five G wireless, um, so five G, um, technology. And I'm no expert, but, um, it's been, it's been, um. It's being deployed throughout, throughout the, uh, country, right? And, and certainly, um, uh, throughout New England and Massachusetts. Um, so five G wireless facilities, these are, if you will, small structures that could be placed on. Um, light fixtures that could be placed on standalone poles. Um, from what I understand, my last go around with this, my last experience is I, I think the Verizon or I forgot now who the company was. But they were talking about every eight hundred or thousand feet having these sort of mini towers. Um, I almost think of it as sort of like a, although not exactly, right? A wifi type of booster, if you will, but the five G technology works with other, these other platforms. Um, related to, obviously in our realm and, and GPS and, um, all the smart tech stuff. Um, there's been. An increase of these, certainly in the Boston area and certainly out in Worcester and Springfield. And we may very well also, although nothing on the horizon at this time, we, we may see some applications. Um, coming before the, the town. Uh, working with KP Law to establish review process to regulate location and type. There is federal law that oversees this and that, uh, limits capabilities of, of municipalities. This has evolved so quickly, um, certainly in the last three, four years. I remember my first look at a five G wireless ordinance is completely different than, than what, um. Communities are now working on, um, different in terms of what, what we can require for design standards, what we can require for. Um, any incentive fees and so on. Um, this is, um, heavy, heavily supported by, heavily supported, heavily, um, regulated and, uh, federal preemption. On, on many aspects of it, this is evolving. Um, and so KP is assisting the, the town with, um, with the possibility of an ordinance. I don't know where this, which, what the proper vehicle would be and certainly, and we are looking to their guidance. Um, originally it's been under zoning ordinances in some communities. Um, some have adopted in their municipal code as well, but more to come with that. Also another one I put in maybe ready for spring or fall. But just wanted to provide that and this may be new, I don't think we've discussed this, um, as a group in, in the past. But you certainly have probably read about it. Um, and it's become more and more now with so many people working from home, right? Um, and the, the need for. The deployment of this five G technology becomes more and more, uh, important as I, as I'm told. Uh, the last one. Um, it's, it's also of, of, of some interest. So consideration to allow hotels, hotels, motels and country ends, those uses. In our industrial districts, um, our light industrial and our industrial districts by special permit with site plan review. Um, interesting when we look at this. I, I just, um, think of three ninety-five and. Under the highway entry change, this type of use would, um, would be allowed. Uh, if we look at exit five, um, there is light industrial. Over a hundred acres in, in that, uh, in that area right off the highway. And also when we look at the other side of town, down by IPG, there is also, um, light industrial there. Consideration to allow this type of use, um, not by right, um, but by special permit site plan review. Might be something we, we'd want to consider. This is a very challenging time to talk about this, um, and what I mean, just in terms of the economy, right? Um, but certainly, you know, thinking ahead. Hopefully, you know, three, four, five years out, um, it could be a, a great, uh, greater demand or interest in this. Um, certainly would be another point of marketability of some of these sites too. And where there has, to my knowledge, been an interest in some of the, the larger, um, employers in the city, I'm sorry, in, in the town. Um, this might be also something worth, worth pursuing. And simply it's not to change the zoning map, it just is an addition to, uh, to our use table in the industrial to allow these. And I put site plan review in there too, because not all. Having worked with this stuff in the past, right? Not all, um, hotel uses are, are, are equal, right? Not all locations are the same. And, uh, special break gives us discretion, as we know, in site plan review allows us to, to further sink into, to how it, uh, adapts, conforms with. With neighboring uses, so. Um, throwing that out there too, um, as, as something perhaps we, we may want to consider if not spring, fall or, or sometime down the road. But just, um, want to, to let, uh, want to share these three with you all as well.
I had a discussion about this and I, I basically, uh. You know, I, I thought of IPG and I also thought of, uh, he, he brought up Wilson. And I, and I believe Wilson had a site plan that basically had living quarters for certain people that came. For their, uh, sessions they used to run over there. So. Any type of use like that, I can see that working on now, right near IPG like that, in that light industrial area on the other side of the road. If they don't buy that next to expand on that side.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just think about it, you, you say you're going to come to IPG, which I'm sure there's a lot of vendors and there's a lot of people that come there. Where are you going to go to, to find a, a hotel?
Yeah.
Well, my guess is Auburn, that's why Auburn has about four of them in town. Okay, along Route twelve. Has multiple, multiple resident, uh, uh, hotels. At Oxford doesn't really have anything for the, uh, a major. Built business like IPG.
Yeah.
But plus they have IPG, but we lack some of the things that I think they do, do need.
And, and then, um, Auburn gets the, um, the hotels tax.
Yeah, yeah, they do, yeah. It was amazing, they, they all kind of like got built at the same time. What's in Auburn that they need all these things? I could say, I could see a regional. Uh, for, for south of Worcester, yeah, I can actually see it. That's why it went Auburn, went step out, so.
And I'm against the gen, extra businesses, those people are going out to eat, they're going out shopping.
Oh, yeah, that's. Oh, yeah, that's why Route 8, that's why Route 12 is eating mecca over there.
Yep.
So so to recap, we opened up with the village business district. I will further, of course, revise the language there as, you know, taking everyone's comments incorporated into it. For adult uses, I I will I will go back on that. And point well taken, whereas it's it's with the board of selectmen, showing very, very appropriate to 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 follow up and I'll follow up with the the town manager with respect to that. Item three for Dover related uses, I will I will finalize the language and send it over. Cluster zoning. I'll share what I have now as it relates to 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 the incentives. And then, as was discussed, we touched base storm order 5G and hotel. Hotel is 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 pretty straightforward. I I can have is it's 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 done. I can send that over. And and storm order and 5G. 5G would depend on and I'm working with KP Law, but it would depend on on how soon we get a draft and where that that would go, what the best vehicle is, whether it's through zoning or through through the municipal code. And as we talked about storm order, if not spring, possibly the fall time. So that's all that I had as it relates to, and this is the bulk of of tonight, as it relates to zoning amendments, Mr. Chairman and members. If there's nothing else, I'd like to talk about two really quick, two planning projects that that we would like to work on this year.
Okay. Anyone have any other issues for Tony on those items on his recap list? Okay, Tony, go ahead and bring up the other two.
So for 2021 planning projects and grants, there's two planning projects that we're interested in in pursuing. First one is housing production plan. And the second one is our updating our open space and recreation plan. Housing production plan. Cities and towns in Massachusetts have adopted housing production plans to come up with strategies to create more more housing, more affordable housing within their respected communities. And elements of a of the plan would be a comprehensive comprehensive housing needs assessment, establishing housing goals and implementation strategies, implementation strategy, short term, long term, so on. Housing needs assessment, analyze towns demographic and housing characteristics to identify growth trends, market strengths and potential gaps. Housing affordability goals. This would be incorporated from our master plan and future public meetings that would be required of any adopted housing production plan. Implementation strategies could include zoning recommendations. So we've kind of touched upon one, for example, that density bonus provision in cluster zoning. And could also include work for inclusionary zoning, which is in some municipalities would require that any development of a certain size, perhaps X percentage of units be dedicated as affordable. Identify potential funding mechanisms and also any potential, you know, acquisition planning for affordable housing. Affordable housing can be the whole gamut from family housing to 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 senior housing. Now, having a housing production plan is is one thing, going through the the process typically. And I hate to say typical, but it could be eight, nine months or so. Series of public meetings, community engagement and so on. When we get to a point where we have a finalized plan that's adopted by by this board and also by the the Board of Selectmen, then the plan would go to to the state for for their approval, for their for their certification. And I'll and I'll go back to why that's important. Housing production plan is critical for communities, especially for communities that fall short of having 10% of their housing stock eligible in the subsized housing inventory. So here in our town, we are just over 7%. We're not at the 10% threshold and the 10% is based on a ratio of the number of market rate units to the number of affordable units. Come 2014, we come 2014, a few factors. Let us say the more market rate units that come into the system that perhaps it's phase two of Eastland or or another project in town, although Eastland may be the wrong example because they're still working through phase one, the commercial piece, correct? But what I'm getting at is the more market rate units and the less affordable that we're creating, that percentage keeps going down. And why is that percentage important? Because housing certification that's here on the screen enables communities to retain local control while they make steady progress toward the 10% target. Okay, what does that mean? When we have a housing production plan, an approved housing production plan by the state, provided that we're making incremental progress, so each year we're making 0.5% increase in affordable housing, we would qualify under what's called a safe harbor provision. And that is that the town could, should a 40B development, and not that a 40B development is is bad, a 40B development is critical for increasing our our housing stock. But if you take a development, let's say a 40B development that that would come in, we're not at our 10%. They can, through the state law, supersede our our local zoning petition to the state and say, state, town of Oxford is not at their 10%. And therefore, we ask that for public purpose, we ask that that this project be approved and the state would thereby override, the town would override the work that we've done, work the town has done over the years, whether it's that housing opportunity overlay district or even the the village business district. That good work goes out the window when you're not at your 10% or when you can't document. In this case, the mechanism to document is having a housing production plan, incremental progress to fall under that safe harbor provision. The safe harbor provision has been exercised in communities and it's a finding where the town would say, well, and hopefully this is not the case, and it's not the case in every project. There are 40B projects that work very well, even perhaps without this. But this gives the town better control by having a housing production plan in place under that safe harbor provision. If the town exercises that, then the applicant, the 40B applicant cannot appeal the town. And a few examples, one a few years ago was in the town of Easton where they adopted the housing production plan. They renewed their housing production plan. It's good for five years, yes, five years. And they were able to, because the 40B project, they the developer was going to say, well, we're not going to follow your your design standards, let's say, in the village business district. We don't have to because your town is not at 10%. There's that override provision. This gives us protection. Plan development timeline, 10 to 12 months. Term of plan, five years from state certification, estimated cost. This would we'd be applying to to a grant. There's a series of grant rounds that are that are opening up by through the state. And there is one for community. It's a new grant, community planning grant that this would fit right into for housing production. And so the estimated costs would would be funded through a grant, which which we would be putting, I'd be putting an application together for. Jurisdiction would be under Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. And certainly consistency to do housing production plan very well, very consistent with chapter nine of our of our master plan. The other item, too, is our open space recreation plan. This one, perhaps we would seek DLTA funding through our regional planning authority. OSRP is the the short name for this, but our open space rec plan ballpark and other communities, they 25, 30,000 or so to to do such a plan. But also, we do have capacity in house. We'd work in close coordination with with conservation as well. And I do believe we can we can do an update either way, whether we get the grant funding or we we just do in kind. I think we can make it happen. The OSRP, most current one expired back in 2017. And in the plan, there's an inventory, and I'm being very general here. We can go more detail, but I know it's getting late. But inventory of current parcels that are that are listed as as open space, parks, cemeteries are also in there, too, conservation lands and so on. Identify parcels of interest perhaps for for future preservation acquisition. If without an approved open space and rec plan, we're in a dilemma pursuing other grants such as the the park grant, P A R C, and the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, both grants administered through the state. So it's been a few years. This plan is good for seven years. Do believe it's critically important to update and certainly I think you can see the the added benefits by having a current plan opens up other windows of opportunity and many, many communities have have done this successfully. So those are the two planning projects that that I would, you know, would be looking at for for this year. Housing production plan for all the reasons we talked about and the open space recreation plan. And actually, even I should say, in the housing production plan, that too is opens up for other funding opportunities by having a housing production plan. It's identified by the state as one of the best practices for increasing housing production is, yes, no secret, right, having a plan in place. But there's another pocket of funds, what's called housing choice, that we're not there yet because we don't have some of these mechanisms in place. So what I can see is as a year one, a year two development of these plans and then year two, year three, year four, seeking other grants as they become available. This next screen is just a quick snapshot of timelines relative to the state grants that we're pursuing also in here. So basically, in a nutshell, the state has streamlined up to, I think, nine or 10 different grants and designations, housing choice designation and and a few others, but Mass Works is in here. Mass Downtown Initiative, which we just got a grant for or just announced two weeks ago or so, but and I'll talk about that after, but the MDI grant and the other grants are included in this streamline one stop application that by timeline, cities and towns, we put their applications in sometime this spring. And then hopefully notification award would be sometime this fall. So just wanted to to share with you, this was a screenshot from the last virtual session that that I had on on the one stop, but it is important for for all grants that for all grants that the town's pursuing, in particular, these nine or 10. Interesting on the on the MDI Mass Downtown Initiative grant, there was a special round through the CARES Act, I believe I mentioned a few meetings ago. We were very fortunate to receive, and this is technical assistance funding in light of of COVID, funded through a dedicated source of funds through the CARES Act money for planning to assist small businesses as it relates to perhaps what someone called the new normal and perhaps operation measures that, thinking about the online processing, curbside pickup, delivery to to come up with a a plan to to assist small businesses in town with with enhancing or entering into the ability to to open up their their online stores, if you will, that ability to order online, the all the various vendors that are out there with this new with all the new technology, food delivery services and not not just food delivery service, but I could see also for other other types of retail services as well. So it's we're one of, I think, 60 or so towns that that did receive this this technical assistance. And it is for to come up with a plan. It's not implementation funds, but we do hope by having secured this funding that it will open up an opportunity down the road and hopefully by down the road, I mean this year, to secure implementation funds for perhaps for storefront improvements, improvements relative to the operation of small businesses in town, frankly. So Mr. Chairman, that's all that I had on on this second piece. And I happy to answer any questions. Just wanted want to share what some of the other stuff we've been working on relative to to potential planning projects and grant opportunities coming up this year. So that's all.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you very much.
My honor, Rich, because Chris is not here.
Thank you, Tony.
Yes, you are.
I make the motion. First of all, thank you, Tony, and I make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
I can invite Jeff. For the discussion to be undone, all those voting in favor, I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Norman votes aye.
Roger. Carried unanimously. Well, thank you very much.